Uh, where's my script? Um, Jeffrey?
Since we have all the firefighters here, oh, and Denise, be careful. Um, thanks for speaking.
Um, Madam Chair, so...
We're gonna do the firefighter thing first.
Are you gonna do it first or can I go away from the end? Okay.
That makes sense, right?
Your call.
Yeah.
No, nobody can speak.
Good afternoon. I'd like to now call back to order the Pasco County Board of County Commission meeting at June 21st, of June 21st, 2022. Please silence all electronic devices and mute your microphones. So normally, we start with public hearings, sorry Denise, but we had said that we would have the commissioners get a little more understanding of what we're dealing with, with the lawsuit, and so I think people have had an opportunity to talk and understand, so I can have Barbara come up and explain it if you'd like, or we can...
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I...
Yeah.
I think based on the briefings that we've...
Who's, Jeffrey?
Based on the briefings you've all had, my recommendation continues to be that you have a litigation assessment meeting at your next meeting, so that you all can candidly talk about the issues that are involved in this particular case, and have that candid discussion, which will be court reported, as all litigation assessment meetings are, but that it's not out in the public, especially if you're inclined on settling this at a later date.
Commissioner Mariano.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and just meeting with the county attorney, got a little bit more information, which, there's a lot of information that's out there. We, when we meet in a private litigation meeting, it's all recorded, all the documents there, so everybody gets to read what we said after we said it, but the flexibility we get to talk with each other with the county attorney puts us in a position to have that dialogue, we're going to have that dialogue, and I would just want some clarification, which I didn't know, which I just found out in the briefing as well, is basal cancer is a non-invasive, it's on the skin, they freeze it when they take it off, there's not a lot of danger to it, and that's what the question was, as far as did the legislation mean to go that far. Aflac and Chubb both denied basal cancer as far as that the $25,000 settlement. We are going to look at it, I'm gonna recommend to make a motion that we do, as the county attorney suggests, at our next BOC meeting, we allocate time to do a litigation assessment meeting, so we can talk about it, and then we can make a recommendation at the end of the litigation assessment, like we always do, to come forward. I will tell you, this whole board has tremendous respect for you and appreciation for you, firefighters, paramedics, we appreciate everything, we want you to do, to serve our people as best you can, and we're gonna continue to do that, this is just one of those steps, and I, I get a better appreciation, I think the end result would be good, and we're gonna take a look at this thing all the way through, what we need to make sure is we're protecting the county in full way, you know, we spent a lot of money giving you guys, and working to get there, it's taken time through education from you guys to us, that we need to make sure your uniforms are clean right away, that you got a dec- decamination zone, number one, number two, to protect yourselves, to protect everybody in there, so we're not blind to it, but we gotta go do this meeting the way we've gotta go do it, we're gonna do it the next, next meeting, and I think you'll see a decision shortly thereafter, and I mean same day.
Thank you, Commissioner Mariano.
So that'll be my motion, that we continue, continue, make a motion to have a litigation assessment meeting at the next Board of County Commissioners meeting.
Can I, I think it's already set for the next meeting, so...
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know that you, that we need a motion, is that correct?
No, if you give me direction to set up a litigation assessment meeting, which I had at the last, last board meeting, I couldn't get outside counsel to this meeting, that's why it was scheduled for the 12th, or the next, the next really scheduled meeting, all I really need is direction of whether you wanna have it at noon, over the, over the lunch break, or before, or at the conclusion of your business that day, so that I can get the counsel there and a court reporter there.
Okay, raise your hand if noon is good.
I think that we have more time to, it's an hour and a half.
Okay, it's noon.
Okay, we want time.
Okay, we have a lot of public hearings, so I do wanna keep moving, is that okay? Okay, all right, so we will continue, and I echo Commissioner Mariano's sentiments, I think you see how much this county is investing in helping to keep you safe, and, but we never, no matter what the topic is, discuss litigation here, it's just really, really bad form, and we can't do that, so we thank you for coming, but we're, we're gonna move on to the public hearing, and the first one up is P-62.
Item P-62 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 18th, 2022.
Do you want me to wait a few seconds, or...
Yeah, give, give him just a few seconds.
Okay.
They're being very quiet and respectful, so I think you can go.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, Commissioners Denise Hernandez, planning and...
Most, most of them were.
Planning and development, good afternoon. Item P-62 is BCS 220270, this was actually published in the agenda, agenda as a continuance to the August 9th, 2022 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
I'll take a motion? Oh, do I have to see if anyone wants to speak?
No, it was advertised.
Advertise as continuance, okay?
Continue time certain, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, P-63.
Item P-63 was published in Tampa Bay Times on May 18th, 2022.
P-63 is BCS 220271, likewise, this was also published in the agenda as a continuance to the August 9th, 2022 Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Move to continue time certain, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, thank you, P-64, please announce the...
Item P-64 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on June 8th, 2022.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mike Schumay, Director of Pasco County Animal Services, P-64 is ordinance amendments, Chapter 14, animals. Just brief background, on February 22nd, this year, the board heard presentation from Animal Services Department regarding the abandonment of animals in the wild due to impulse buying from various retail revenues and the lack of public education on rabbit ownership. The board directed Animal Services to initiate an ordinance amendment to Chapter 14, to add rabbits to the list of pets prohibited for sale in public places and required certificates of source for the retail sale of pet rabbits in pet stores, so that's where we are today, it's presenting an ordinance amendment to the Board of County Commissioners, Chapter 14 of the Pasco Code relating to animals, providing for definitions to include rabbits, providing for restrictions on the sale of rabbits in public places, providing for removal of rescue tag definitions and exemptions, providing for enforcement, penalties and remedies for violation, providing for applicability, repealer, separability, inclusion into the code of ordinance, providing for the transmission of the ordinance to the Department of State, and providing for an effective date. So basically, we're adding, in our definition section, we'll be adding rabbits to the definitions that pertain to animal rescue organizations, breeders, brokers, certificate of source, pet dealers, pet sellers, and pet stores. We're also gonna be removing a reference to, or a definition of rescue tags, this, also there's an exemption for rescue tags in 1496, and we're doing this because this particular definition has not been applied to anything in, in about 10 and a half years since we started the SAVE 90 program, rescue organizations buy their own licenses. The other sections of the ordinance that'll be amended, is Section 14-108, which is the primary focus of retail sales on dogs, cats, and rabbits, we've added rabbits to this section, we've added certificate of sources required by pet stores now to sell rabbits, also sales records, requirements by pet stores to account for their sales of rabbits, and we're prohibiting the sale of rabbits in public and private streets, flea markets, parking lots, or open air venues. This coincides with the same ordinance we had for puppies, kittens, cats, and dogs. We also restrict the sale of rabbits by breeders, pet dealers, or large kennels, who typically are permitted in locations only. Section 108 also is adding rabbits to the penalty section, and in Section 14-115, we're prohibiting the transfer of rabbits along with dogs and cats for many one or two, anyone who is on the animal abuse registry. Animal Services recommends you accept public comment, adopt a proposed ordinance amendment by rule call vote, authorize the chairman's signature on the same, and direct board records to transmit the ordinance amendment and the coding form by electronic mail to the Department of State within 10 days after enactment.
Thank you. Board members, do we have any questions before we open up to the public?
We'll wait for public.
Okay, um, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this ordinance?
We do, and we have some on WebEx as well.
Okay.
So I'll go ahead and call the ones that are here, we first have Kurt Marsh, followed by, I think it's Mary Lynn, hmm, I can't, I don't, I can't see the last name, but, Mr. Marsh, if you go ahead.
Good morning, or good afternoon, my name is Curtis Marsh, I am president of Suncoast House Rabbit Rescue, I live at 3222 Masonville Loop Holiday. Okay, I'm glad we finally got this far, just to reiterate, in the last 72 hours, we've been contacted in the Tampa Bay area again by, over, with people with 22 rabbits looking to rehome them, and that's just this weekend, so anything you can do to stop the constant flow of rabbits will help, and it's not included in the ordinance, and all the talks that I've had, there's been some concern by some commissioners around the area, they're always worried about if we take, ban the, you know, stop the sale of rabbits, it'll take food off of someone's table, there are no pet stores selling rabbits that people are eating, that's a whole different ball of wax that goes somewhere else, has nothing to do with pet stores, no one's buying a $125 rabbit to turn around and raise food.
Hopefully.
Hopefully, I mean, if they are, it's...
Never say never.
They're, they're not buying a rabbit that's three pounds, they're, you know, no one's eating quail and Cornish hens anymore either, so, anyway, I can't, don't have anything else to say other than please vote yes.
Yeah, I, I think we are, but I can't speak for everybody. Anyone else wanna speak?
I have a list, you want me to go down the list?
Okay.
Okay.
Although, although we could save trouble if, I mean, maybe if people knew it, it was gonna be favorable, and we didn't, we wouldn't have to have everybody come up, but...
My name is Mary Lynn...
You can lower that, oh. Doesn't go low enough for me.
My name is Mary Lynn Fusell, I live in Pasco County, and I recently had the opportunity to foster some rabbits, and I just became aware of how sensitive they are, not only physically, but emotionally, and these stores and these roadsides just don't understand, they just want to sell them and make some money on them, and I think that's very cruel and unfair to these little critters, if there's anything you can do to help these, ban the sales of these rabbits, appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Fusell, did you give your address for the record?
Yes, it's on there, 8010?
If you could speak it into the record, thank you.
8010, State Road 52?
Thank you.
Hudson, Flor, Hudson, Florida.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, I have Gwen Burley, followed by, I think it's Sanjay Schwartz? Gwen Burley, okay.
My name is Gwen Burley, I live at 155 Diane Circle, Indy Atlantic, which is over on the east coast, so I drove to this side of the state for several reasons, one is to support a rabbit ordinance that includes no sales by pet stores, I'm here so that I'm not, I'm not an anonymous keyboard warrior, I've written a lot of emails to you, I kinda hoped that the information that I shared with you supported no sales at pet stores, I thought, I kinda made it clear that the pet stores become community friendly when they are prohibited from retail sales, they then turn around and advocate for adoption. I think, I think there's two ways to handle the rabbit issue, you can either have action or you can have apathy, when something comes up in our lives that's uncomfortable, we can make a choice to either be proactive, or we can make a default decision, so I kinda think what you're doing is making a default decision, so that you don't have to deal with backlash from your stores, I think, I'll speak for myself anyway, often when I choose not to address a problem, life will deliver us a circumstance that is too large to ignore, and I think that then you have to make decisions, and your excuse is that you no longer had a choice, I think you have to look at your animal services and decide whether you're being irresponsible, in that you could have a large rabbit abandonment event, or you could have a hoarder situation, which happens a lot, I think we documented that, and then your animal services is up the proverbial creek, there's no support.
You have another minute.
Okay, so, I mean, do you have any questions about that? Do you understand what happens if your animal services gets 50 rabbit situation, 100 rabbit situation? Rabbit rescues are the ones that have always stepped in to help animal services around this state, and they're, they're underwater.
We don't talk back and forth when I'm on the podium.
Thank you.
I was hoping you'd have questions.
No, that's not the way it works, public comment.
Thank you.
Sanjay Schwartz, Schwartz, is that correct? Followed by Miriam Parham.
Good afternoon, my name is Zunia Schwartz, I'm at 22, at 3222 Masonville Loop in Holiday, Florida, and I'm here today to express my support for the proposed ordinance change that will prohibit the sale of rabbits in public spaces, however, I would like to encourage you to not stop there, but take a step further and consider a full ban on the sale of rabbits in pet stores, as you probably noticed, none of the pet stores thus far have made an appearance at any of the previous meetings to voice their concern over a potential stop of rabbit sales at their stores, many of the pet store employees are even in support of a full ban as they realize that pets are often, that rabbits are often impulsed by and need a lot of care and a lot, are a lot more work than many people realize. In Orlando, pet supermarket immediately reached out to rescues to hold adoption events after the rabbit sale ban went into effect, the sales of rabbits don't even make a big dent into the overall sales of the stores that sell them, so please consider the welfare of these intelligent and fragile creatures and consider a full ban of rabbits in the future, thank you.
Thank you. Miriam Parham, followed by Diane Kuhn.
Hello, my name's Miriam Parham, and I am a Pasco resident for the past 27 years and also worked in healthcare, I'm at 9932 Caribou Trail, Dade City, I also represent Florida Voices for Animals, a nonprofit organization with over 4,500 supporters, our mission is to educate the public about animal abuse exploitation, but with the current situation, I know we talked about education, providing some piece of paper, telling them how to care for the rabbit, that's not enough, most probably won't read it, and if the pet shops don't understand or agree with the problems faced by the rabbits during their lifetime, you know, how can they provide education? I went to one place and they directed me to a book, a big thick book about how to care for rabbits, they didn't have anything to provide for education, there's really no humane way to breed transporter cell rabbits, the entire industry, it causes extreme suffering to make a profit, the breeders could be like puppy mills, some have been confirmed to be, the transporters, the cages are tightly packed with baby bunnies, and even short distances can be very stressful, extremely stressful to the baby bunnies, the retailers often keep them in wire cages, you've seen the pictures, and with other issues with how they're in there, but finally, it's the consumer, it's been mentioned, there's a lot of suffering and abuse that occurs in the hand of many well-meaning consumers, who are unaware of the care required, as has been pointed, pointed out, and not only that they chew a lot of things, but they, they really don't like to be picked up or held by young kids who don't know how to hold them, so they can be easily injured or killed during interactions, they're not toys, and they can scratch little arms and faces of kids trying to pick them up when they struggle and they're in discomfort and stress, and usually they're timid, but they can be startled and they can bite, and I mentioned before, they can be easily become sick, and they're good at hiding it until it's too late, so with all these concerns, it's not surprising that children or parents tire of the caregiving necessary and no longer want them, and we've talked before about, they're rarely good options, the shelters and the sanctuaries are full, and so when... and so when they're turned away because there's no more room, or people don't know where to take them, that's where more suffering and tragedy begins, because then sadly they're released to survive on their own. A huge challenge for domestic rabbits, and there are not just extreme temperatures, but predators can get them. So, the recent stories of a lot of abandoned domesticated rabbits, found skinny, malnourished, injured, or growing. It's a huge challenge for, as we said, the shelters and sanctuaries. And they're overwhelmed, and it's heartbreaking to all of them. So, please listen to the facts and what we're sharing with you. Those innocent creatures are suffering, and they really don't have good options. So, please join the progressive counties in Florida like DeSota, Orange, and most recently Martin County, and cities like Key West and Port St. Lucie, and states like California and New York who have banned the rabbit retail sales. This is really a year-round tragic situation, obviously worse around Easter. But please do the right thing today. Please protect those innocent bunnies from the tragic outcomes. So please just ban the retail sale of rabbits. I do thank you for the ban in the public places, that's a start. But we need to go the whole way that it's headed in all these other places. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Diane Kuhn, followed by Marie Galbraith.
Hello, my name is Diane Kuhn, and I live at ninety-eleven Exposition Drive in Tampa, Florida. I'm also a member of Florida Voices for Animals. And I'm here today to let you know that I support a full retail rabbit ban in Pasco County. And I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Marie Galbraith. Thank you. Followed by Dara Crystal.
Hello, my name is Marie Galbraith. I live at eleven-eight-two-five Hickory Nut Drive in Tampa, Florida. And I am a board member, I am a board member of Florida Voices for Animals. I did speak at the previous meeting that you had concerning the rabbits, and I am speaking on their behalf. I do support a full retail rabbit ban. I have sent you emails, several emails, and so you have all the information that, that I wanted to present to you. So please do, do the right thing by the rabbits. Thank you.
Dara Crystal, followed by Renee Rivard.
Could you go ahead and line up if you're here to speak about the rabbits? And it'd be great if you could say something different, because we have a lot of people saying the same thing, and if you want to make another point, that'd be great. We have a very busy day. Is there, is there anyone else that wants to speak about rabbits? Please get in line. And if you're the last one raising your hand, you'll be the last speaker on rabbits. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Dara Crystal. I am a three-six-three-three Kings Road in Palm Harbor. I'm calling for a, um, a full retail ban of the rabbits. Flea markets, pet stores, you know, you name it, the rescues are, of course, as they've mentioned, overflowing. So, at nearly fifteen-hundred signatures, we have a petition online stating that the public's ready for, for a full ban. You know, the rescues are going out, trapping rabbits out and about. And not, not to mention, it's, it really is tough on these creatures. That being said, they're very docile. They're not pets for children. They, they definitely are animals that require specific care. And a large amount of the population just don't know how to properly care for them. Most likely, they become overwhelmed, and then they release them outside if they can't get them into shelters or rescues. So that being said, we're ready, we're ready for a change. So please support a full retail ban of the rabbits. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, commissioners, Renee Rivard. Cortez, Florida. I respect the folks who do animal rescue. I work on animal legis-
Ma'am, ma'am, we need your address, please.
Oh, P.O. Box eighty-one, Cortez, Florida. I respect the folks-
Code and your zip code.
Three-four-two-one-five.
Thank you.
I respect the folks who do animal rescue. I work on animal legislation. I don't do animal rescue. I don't do animal rescue because I would be angrier than I already am. Angry that people abuse animals. Angry that animals suffer and die so people can make money. Angry that many legislators turn their heads. The buck should stop here. You are the people who make the rules. Your animal services director said eighty percent of pet rabbits die, are surrendered, or abandoned in the first year. I repeat, eighty percent of pet rabbits die, are surrendered, or abandoned in the first year. In addition to Sun Coast House Rabbit Rescue, you already have a new brick-and-mortar rescue taking in rabbits, Runaways Animal Rescue. I am sure their intent was to help animal services with dogs and cats, but now they're taking in rabbits and spending their resources on them. I saw eight rabbits up for adoption on their website. Last year, the Tampa Humane Society spent forty thousand dollars just to spay and neuter the two-hundred-and-sixty-one rabbits they took in last year. That forty thousand dollars could have been used to help animal services with cats and dogs. Tampa Humane Society's CEO supports a full retail rabbit ban. Pinellas SPCA took in almost a thousand rabbits in the last three years. Pasco is growing in population, and senior unwanted pet rabbits numbers will catch up to Hillsborough and Pinellas. Your rabbit rescue and those across the state have to, that rely on fosters are overwhelmed and struggling to keep up. For them, it never ends. Their lives are ruined by this problem. Please help them, commissioners. You don't allow rabbits at your animal services. Rabbits are the third given-up pet, given up in high numbers. Education means nothing. People still give up dogs and cats. Do something to help them, even if it's an Easter ban, to stop the retail sales during March and April. If people can't find a rescue to rehome their unwanted pet rabbits, they dump them outside and dump them in pairs where they multiply quickly into colonies up to a hundred rabbits. The Florida Department of Agriculture is on high alert for deadly rabbit virus, which these store rabbits bring into our state. The virus could wipe out our entire wild rabbit population. Fifteen years ago, Pet Co. and Pet Smart stopped selling rabbits because of this problem. Other pet stores can still, can do the same, go to an adoption model and still make money off of their supplies. Rabbits are only about one to two percent of their business. Please set an example, commissioners. Make a motion to add rabbits to your dog and cat ban, the third most given-up pet. Make the stuff, the buck stop here. Thank you.
And our last speaker that's here. We have some online. That's you. Yeah. And we don't have any online? We do. Yeah.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Barbara Costa. I live at six-zero-one-seven Broken Arrow Drive, Newport Ritchie, Florida, three-four-six-five-three. I'm here in support of a full retail ban on the sale of rabbits. I am the rescue and adoption coordinator for cats for Puss in Village Rescue, based in Newport Ritchie. I have been doing cats for thirty-five years. I've been telling people for thirty-five years, spay and neuter is what you have to do. Really done a whole lot of good. I know animal services is overwhelmed with cats coming in, with dogs coming in. They don't have space to take rabbits. Runaways didn't start to take rabbits, but they're taking rabbits because there's nowhere else. I get calls, oh, will you take cats? Will you take my rabbit? I'm unable to do that. So I have to tell these people, I'm sorry, I can't help you. And they ask me what I would do. I would tell them, go to where you bought the rabbit. Well, I went into pet supermarket, and I asked the employees there, and they said, they sell them, but they're not allowed to take them back if someone doesn't want them. And when I asked them, well, what do you tell people? And they said, we don't know what to tell people. So we know what happens to a lot of them. People abandon them. They don't think of them as sentient beings. They don't understand that they breed like crazy. And the virus that's being spread, coming in from Europe in rabbits, will eventually go to our wild population, and that's the end of rabbits. If people don't care about the wild rabbits, care about the predators that survive on them. So I'm asking you to please support a total retail ban on the sale of rabbits, including pet stores. Pet Smart and Pet Co. don't sell rabbits, and they both do great. Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, we'll move on to the online speakers.
All right, we have Anne Marie Cancio. Looks like you are... Is she on? Your mic's on, if you would like to go ahead.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, thank you. My name is Anne Marie Cancio. I live at one-seven-eight-zero-two Ridgeway Court in Tampa, three-three-six-four-seven. And I, I am taking heed of, of your call to, you know, kind of reduce what we have to say. I don't have anything to add that's original. But I did want to call and express my interest in this topic. So the only thing I, I want to say is just that I believe that the Pasco Board of Accounting Commissioners has a golden opportunity to drastically change the situation and to help ease the plight of rabbit rescues and the staggering number of abandoned rabbits in their charge by approving a county ordinance to ban the retail sales of rabbits. So I urge you to give rabbits the same consideration and mercy that was extended to dogs and cats when this body took action to ban the retail sales of dogs and cats in twenty-twenty. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next. Next, we have Laura Pennington. Hold on just a moment, we're... Okay, Ms. Pennington, we can probably hear you now, if you'd like to begin.
Okay. Yes, I'd also like to say I support-
Laura, need your name and address for the record, please.
Oh, sure. Laura Pennington, thirty-one oh-seven Belmore Road, Tampa, Florida, three-three-six-one-eight. Part of the reason I started to speak at some of these things is that I, I found a, a dead abandoned rabbit in the park fairly recently, and it kind of made me sad. I had rabbits coming up. They are very sensitive, sweet animals. They are hard to care for. A couple of mine got killed by predators. A couple got poisoned. And it was traumatic for me, for my sister, for my family. And it was, it was heartbreaking. And I think it's something that's easily avoidable by this retail ban, because I do think, in my family's case and in a lot of families, it's an impulse purchase. My daughter, for years, bugged me to get a rabbit, and I just said, no, I don't think they make good pets for children. And it was tough. She bugged me for probably a decade, and I kept saying no, because they are sweet, sensitive, they're not like dogs and cats. They don't make great pets for children. So I'd like you to consider that when you vote. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Nina Corino. Hold on just a moment.
I think you can hear me.
We can hear you now. If you state your name and address for the record, and you can proceed.
Okay, that's good. This is Corino, two-six-six-six-Dagan Court, Palm Harbor, three-four-six-eight-four.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'm listening to the speech, and what everybody has said thus far is, I fully support everything that they have said, and all the points that they have brought up. So, well said by everybody so far. And I do support a full retail ban on rabbits. This is a great opportunity to please alleviate this horrible situation. And that's about all I have to say. I just fully support the full re, full retail ban on rabbits. Please, please. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
This is the last one, that's on WebEx. Ashlyn St. Clair. Hold on just a moment. And you should be good.
Hi, my name is Ashlyn St. Clair. I'm from Port Orange, Florida, fifty-seven forty-eight Stewart Avenue, three-two-one-two-seven.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Okay, I'm, I'm here to just, again, support the full retail ban of rabbits and just touch on a few points that you've heard everybody else say that these are sensitive animals, and that is right on point. If these animals get scared, in a certain way, they can pass away from a heart attack. If they're held the wrong way, they can break their backs trying to escape. They can scratch and claw at children. I've visited many pet stores and have watched people come in, handle the rabbits improperly. I've seen in proper care, the rabbits flies, flying around that can lay eggs in their ears and cause mites. I, I've taken care of several rabbits in my lifetime, and it breaks my heart to see all of these rescues, so full abandoned and mistreated rabbits. And I would just like to say that I, I too support the full ban of rabbits, and I won't take up any more of your time, but just to say I support this as well.
Thank you. That's it? Okay. All right, board members.
Can Mike come back on? I assume this is a question others might be asking as well. Okay, so, wrote the ordinance, you talked obviously, I would assume you, you reached out and spoke with all the commissioners and stuff. I did travel around the, some of the, and I apologize. Here's my microphone. Give me one sec. There we go. Is that better? I traveled around some of the pet stores in, in my area. And that, when I say my area, around Wesley Chapel, Lena Lakes. I didn't see any rabbits recently. I'm not saying they don't have them. But in your, I mean, listen, I mean, you don't take rabbits. Typically.
Typically.
Typically don't, right? I mean, but if we do it all right, all-out ban on the retail sales of rabbits, you'd say fine?
Yes.
Okay. Now, now, the other question would be, if that's the direction this board decides to go in, you do have feed stores
Right.
that sell rabbits for breeding and for feed. I, I know of at least two feed stores around the Lena Lakes area. I think there's some on the west side as well. Yeah.
Are they retail?
Yeah. Well, that's, I guess that's the question. How do you distinguish between the two? Now, listen, this guy doesn't eat rabbits. But some people do, and some, some people breed them for agricultural uses. How do you distinguish the two?
For me, they're all retail. I mean, when we look at retail, because they're housing those animals in their stores, there's a, there's an element of that that is inhumane, as I visit some of them, and you see it. I think that if people want rabbits, there's other agricultural sources that they could get them from.
Like, for example, what? You know, if, if a-
A lot of 4-H breeders out there.
So say if a farmer wanted to have rabbits, how would they go about doing that?
I'm not sure exactly how they go about it, honestly. But I think there's enough breeders out there that legitimately sell rabbits that they could find those, if they wanted them.
All right, those are questions. I mean, the, one of the suggestions was also made, looking at around Easter time, because that's when the most sales take place. And I think they mentioned like a February, March, April type of situation. Or maybe it was just March and April, but...
I think the other thing to consider, too, is wherever they're getting those, that they're going to use for food, or for growing, or for agricultural purposes, those are not the ones they're abandoning.
And I think one of the speakers mentioned that as well. That's typically not the case. Okay, that's all I have for now.
Senator Chairman.
Yep.
If I can follow up on the commissioners in line of inquiry. What the ordinance that has been advertised for public hearing today is in public places, you would have to re-advertise to include a retail ban?
I understand.
Okay.
Thank you. I appreciate, yeah. No, thanks. I appreciate it. Yeah. That's why I asked, you know, Mike these questions.
I just didn't want a motion to be made.
No, no, I, I thank you. No, I think, and, and, so let me follow up on that, too. I, I guess you could always, again, if so, if the board so inclines, is you could possibly move forward with the ordinance of today. And then if you want to make a mimic to it, we would have, we would have to move forward with that.
That would be my recommendation, and you, we'd have to see what the governor's office did with the business damage legislation.
Right.
Which is on his desk, but he hasn't signed, so.
And I would assume some of the folks out there are aware of what he's speaking of. So, again, today, you would not be able to, since it's not advertised, do an all out retail ban. You would have to advertise that to allow the public or those concerned citizens to come speak on it. But today, we can move forward with this. If we want to bring back the other, we would have to advertise it again. Thank you, ma'am.
So I mentioned, when we brought this up before, that I was for the ban. Yeah, so just getting that on the record. Yeah?
Mike, there's no way to determine, like, to separate retail and wholesale? Like a farmer or something who buys them in mass quantities compared to the one by one sale in a retail store? There's no way to divide that?
I'm not sure what would define those two. To separate them out? We could certainly look into it. And we could look at the agricultural aspect of it because I believe that if you are strictly dealing with agricultural sales, it's protected under, I believe, the Farm Act. So.
I would assume it would be.
4H, things like that, I believe are protected. So we could look at that a little further if we need to.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yep.
Again, I don't, I just don't want us to go down a slippery slope on the agricultural side where we open up bigger problems.
But I don't think they buy their product at a pet store.
Well, I just want to make sure. That's why, you know, I wanted the county attorney to come in, too. So if we're done with comments now, I'll make the motion to approve this today. And then I'll make a separate motion and bring back the other because we can't do the other today. Okay?
Second on your first motion.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll do a roll call vote?
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. And then?
And Madam Chair, so I will make a motion to bring back the full retail ban and advertise it. I guess would be, actually, let me restate my motion. I'd like to bring, do an amendment to what's been approved today to bring back a full retail ban in addition to what's been stated in this ordinance.
Okay.
Where does, where do they purchase their 4H rabbits from?
I don't know.
Typically, they're getting theirs from family members who have been through 4H before, other friends they know in the school system that sponsors the 4H, and also agricultural sources, so farms, things like that. So I would ask one clarification. Do you want me to come back with any kind of exemption? I prefer not to. I'd like to make it a full ban without any exceptions or exemptions because in our retail ban on dogs and cats, we did have one store in Pasco that was selling puppies and kittens, and we allowed them an extension. That store no longer exists. So I'd like to remove the entire exemption from the ordinance if I can.
I think Mr. Steinstein would probably be able to, and he also wants, like he stated before, we have to see what's, he's got, yeah, the legislation. He's going to have to look that over as well.
Yeah, it's a question of whether or not it gets vetoed or whether it gets signed. At this point, apparently, he's gotten until July 2nd to sign it.
Next Friday.
We've actually heard testimony from other councils where pet stores have come, and the numbers they gave were not significant to the 15% loss.
Okay.
Just on rabbit sales and rabbit things. So I doubt it's even going to be, it'll probably be an issue.
Okay.
All right, then I'll just keep my motion as.
Yeah. Motion second to bring back, no exemptions.
Well, you might want to have, I think that what Mr. Schumate is saying is he wants to get rid of the exemption that's already in. But you probably do want to have an exemption for agricultural sales.
Yeah.
Yes.
From what I'm hearing.
Yes.
It won't interfere with any agricultural or state statutes or anything, so.
But we'll work with.
And what about the rabbits that have been rescued? Are they allowed to resell or re-adopt them out?
Typically, what we do with the, like we did with the puppy and dogs, those stores can sell technically if they're sponsoring. Actually, we don't allow the stores to sell. We allow them to host the rescues who sell. And we have allowed animal welfare organizations to do that under the ordinance.
Okay.
That's what Petco and PetSmart do right now with dogs and cats and kittens and puppies.
Right.
They just open their doors and allow them to sell the animals because they know if the cells of the animals are there, the cell of the supplies that they host, that's their business, and that's why they do it, so.
Madam Chair, we're good to call a motion.
Yeah. It does not have to be a roll call.
It does not have to be a roll call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Next one.
P 65.
P 65.
Item P 65 was published in Tampa Times on February 2nd, 2022.
Good afternoon, Denise Hernandez, Planning and Development. Item P 65 is PDD 220053. Today is the adoption on this item. So I'm asking, we're asking that you adopt the ordinance by roll call vote. It's an ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan Providing for Text Amendments to Future Land Use Element Appendix and Providing for Additional Text Amendments as Necessary for Internal Consistency. A MAP Amendment to the Future Land Use MAP 2-9 Amending Subarea MAP 2-922 Gateway Hub Subarea and Subarea MAP 2-922A Gateway Hub Subcategories Providing for Repealer Severability and an Effective Date. I do want to say that there was a revised agenda memo that was submitted to the Clerk's Office that modified just the Land Development Code sections in page six. This was presented to the local planning agency who found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners on February 17, and it was transmitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity and Other Reviewing Agencies on March 8, 2022. Again, if you would take public comment and adopt by roll call vote.
Okay, would the applicant like to speak?
He waved you off.
Oh, okay. All right, is there anyone who wishes to speak on P 65?
No one signed up for P 65.
All right, board members.
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry, roll call. Okay.
District one.
Go ahead.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Moore. District four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. All right, P 66.
Found it. Item P 66 was published in Tampa Times on November 24, 2021, and June 1, 2022.
P 66 is PDD 220087. This is likewise the adoption for this item. So we're asking you to accept public comment and adopt by roll call vote. It's a large scale comprehensive plan amendment, CPAL 2105, Faircloth at Bellamy. An ordinance amending the Pasco County Comprehensive Plan Providing for a Large Scale Comprehensive Plan Amendment to the Future Land Use Maps 2-15 and Sheet 13, Changing from RES 1 Residential 1 Deliana per Gross Acre to PD Plan Development on approximately 188 acres of real property located north of State Route 52 and west of Bellamy Brothers Boulevard. A text amendment creating subarea policy, FLU 7.1.64, Faircloth at Bellamy. A MAP Amendment to the Future Land Use MAP 2-9, Adding Subarea MAP 2-964 Faircloth at Bellamy, Providing for Additional Text Amendments as Necessary for Internal Consistency, Providing for Repealer Severability and an Effective Date, Was Presented to the Local Planning Agency Who Found it Consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and Recommended Approval to the Board of County Commissioners on December 19, sorry, 9, 2021. And it was transmitted to the Department of Economic Opportunity and Other Reviewing Agencies on January 11, 2022. Again, please accept public comment and adopt by roll call vote.
Does the applicant want to speak? Okay.
Anybody sign up?
No one has signed up.
No one's signed up, okay.
Okay.
No. You need to call for public comment, even if no one has signed up.
Is there any public comment about this?
Move approval.
Second.
I'm just, sorry, I didn't look to see what the trail situation was around here. But I'll go ahead and do the roll call vote.
District one, Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District two, Commissioner Moore. District four, Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District five, Commissioner Mariano. District three, Chairman Starkey.
Aye. Next one.
P 67 was published in Tampa Times on May 22, 2022.
All right, P 67 is PDD 220397. This is the adoption for this item. This item was presented to the Horizontal Roundtable Interested Parties Meeting on April 18, 2022. It was provided availability for comments. We did not receive comments from the Horizontal Roundtable or Interested Parties Meeting. This went to a local planning agency who found it consistent with the comprehensive plan, recommended approval to the Board of County Commissioners. And this was also presented, a full presentation at first reading to the Board of County Commissioners on June 7, 2022. An ordinance by the Pasco County Board of County Commissioners Amending the Pasco County Land Development Code, Ordinance Number 8921 as amended, Providing for Amendments to Section 46.1 Signs, Section 601 Traditional Neighborhood Development, Section 1200 Nonconformities Creating Section 1203.4 Nonconforming Signs, Amending Appendix A Definitions, Providing for Additional Amendments as Necessary for Internal Consistency, Providing for Applicability, Repealer, Severability, Inclusion into the Land Development Code Modification and an Effective Date. So we're asking today that you please accept public comment and adopt by roll call vote.
All right, Denise, the changes that we talked about.
Every single one was taken care of. Otherwise, I would not be here today in front of you telling you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Does anyone have any questions for Denise?
No, Chair.
Commissioner Mariano.
Page 30.
Yes, sir.
Section C 3, Sign Structure Requirements.
Can you please tell me the section? Because I think I may have just printed out the strike through underline because that's kind of how I function. Can you tell me the subsection, please?
Sighting requirements, then digital signs.
Page 30, okay.
Page 30, yeah.
All right.
It's on my page 30.
This is regarding digital signs for office, commercial, and industrial. This is a new section. Yes, sir.
So my concern with the sign ordinance has always been, like the US 19, people like pole signs because they can see them. They elevate them up, they can see them both sides of the road. It says here that a digital display cannot be permanent in a monument sign that's been granted a height increase through an alternative standard.
Yes, sir.
So around the rest of the county, you know, less than a six lane highway, I don't think it's a factor. But I think if you've got a sign that's already up, and you've already got it elevated, I don't know.
Yeah, so.
Why would we want them to have the sign?
Because they have given up other signs in order to have that sign. So this is more, this is, this actually allows more speech on that sign. So there have been signs that, for example, I could think of two different places where that there might be an elevated roadway, and the Planning Commission or the DRC, depending on when it happened, through the alternative standard process, they were granted a 20-foot sign. Well, the maximum height of monument signs is 11 feet. So this kind of goes with the concept that the board did not want to have digital signs on signs that are, you know, nonconforming or signs that were granted a type of exception. So that's where that came from.
Full agreement.
But certainly, if the board gives a different direction, you know, we're here to do what the board asks us to do.
I mean, if I've got someone who's got a 10-foot sign, you know, other than a busy highway, I think they're fine, right? I don't have a problem with that. But if you're on the US 19, you've got extra height, I don't think it should be a total of the square footage of the sign itself because if you take the length, if it's 20 feet high, and it's eight feet wide, that would give them a lot more space to work with, right? I don't want to give them all that space. But again, if they just took more height so people could see it, I would think there's a better square footage way to put it in there where you can actually allow them to have a decent sized sign, but still elevate it up. And whether it be, already, it's already elevated up anyway. I'm not going to flash for more than 15 seconds anyway. The harm would be to allow a facing of the sign. Because I'll tell you, the one sign I'm thinking of right now is Sun Toyota. They went sky high, right? They got the standard part.
Yeah, they got an 18-foot sign.
Right? Now, they just use their top part. They don't use the middle part for that. I don't see a problem with them using, where it says Sun Toyota now, to put it in that same footage that you've already approved for a sign to actually fit in that space.
So are you stating that the digital area cannot go above 11 feet? Is that what you're stating?
No, I'm saying, well, at Sun Toyota, they're 18 height, 18-foot high. So in the top four feet, five feet, they've got the sign there already. So the difference of having an LED sign there or this in there, I don't see what the difference would be.
Well, I mean, so, so when we were talking to the board at the, at the, at the actual board workshop years ago, the board gave us the impression that you didn't want to allow these type of signs on things that were already, had already been granted additional allowances. So that's why we wrote that into the sign. But certainly, open to discussion at the board if you want that to be modified. And you'll see that this is an exception. We have very few alternative standards granted out there for height. I think probably less than 10 that I could think of right now, so.
Okay, does anyone in the?
Madam Chair, I don't, my mic back on. I think the intent of this ordinance, you know, in my opinion, is to kind of clean up the area a little bit. So we think about, you know, obviously 19, we'll use 19 since you brought it up as an example. Let's be honest, it's pretty cluttered, right? I mean, you can go up and down 19.
Not attractive.
It's kind of cluttered. I think it's, you might have a better chance of attracting more businesses to take up those empty spaces, to take up those dilapidated buildings, willing to make investments if it starts looking a little bit better. I mean, it's more difficult for people to want to make an investment in an area that, in certain areas, it's not everywhere, certain areas of 19 that aren't very attractive. And that's, it's been one of the reasons why it's difficult. The people I've spoken with, and I don't know, probably some of the land use attorneys and developers out there, I see some shaking their heads. It's, they're not wanting to make the investments along there. So I think anything, everything we can do to assist in making that more attractive, and people, you know, some people are willing to make those investments. You know, you'd be better off in five or 10 or 15 years. That's, I think that's.
Well, since you opened that door, I wanted to go a little further and say, we need to sunset the old nasty signs. And this happens in many places. So, and my ex-husband, he was in the sign industry. So a sign only has a life.
That's why you hate signs so much, huh?
Huh?
That's why you hate signs.
I just don't like ugly. And I am trying so hard to redevelop 19, and it's very hard when it's ugly. And we've had this monument sign ordinance for a long time, and we're starting to see some redevelopment. But when you have, and you have someone who comes in and they put the nice lower sign, which is still very big, 11-foot high by 22, I mean, it's like a school bus, the size they could still have. But to me, it's just not fair for the, to allow the old ones to stay big and high when everything is coming in nice and new. And I personally think that we should have a sunset. They have X amount of time to conform. And I'm happy to give them, just like we do with the landscaping, to give them some incentive money to take out the old signs. We could say, when the business changes hands, the sign has to come down. But we allow the signs to stay up. And that was a, that wasn't something I thought we were writing into when I helped write this sign ordinance 20-something years ago. So I would love to see a sunsetting requirement or something that encourages the ugly, I'm sorry, the old signs to come down and everyone to be on the same playing field.
Madam Chair, just to follow up. Are we able to, within our ordinance, to use our tree fund? tree fund, since it's incessant landscaping?
We could put an economic development grant in there.
But they do have to spend a percent, a specific amount of percentage improving the property, which could include painting the building, or would it include this, replacing the sign. So there still are those exterior upgrades that they can utilize towards utilizing the landscape grant.
If I, if I may, if I can direct your attention, it's to page 63 of the Strike Through. We have created a new Section 1203.4, which does address, it doesn't, it doesn't sunset particularly, but it does address that permanent nonconforming signs and sign structures shall be removed upon the occurrence of certain things. If you can't have a new permanent sign while a nonconforming used sign remains on the parcel. So that's going to take care of a lot of that. You can't convert to digital unless on a parcel while there's a nonconforming sign. So those folks who want to convert to digital are going to have to remove their nonconforming sign in order to convert to digital. If more than 50% of the signs, the sign area or sign structure is damaged, you have to remove the nonconforming sign. And then it specifically talks about what the word alter is. And then in your Section B, it also says that from time to time, the county may make monies available to assist in the removal of nonconforming signs in the form of a grant or a no to, no or low-interest loan. That's something that, you know, David Engel with the Office of Economic Growth helped us on. So that, I mean, it's, it's already kind of like, there's a, there's a placeholder for that already in the ordinance to do that type of a thing.
Well, it's not the same as sunsetting, but it still hopefully helps a little bit. But I've been hoping that more signs would have come down by now. But, okay, does anyone in the public wish to speak to this?
Madam Chair, can I have a little more conversation on that first? So, so just consider this. Sometimes you really want to fight hard to get something, and you put strong rules in to make a change, and you don't get a change, you wonder why. If you have a pole sign out there right now, and that, that pole sign is 15 feet in the air, 20 feet in the air, you can see it from both sides. I'm just going to talk about US-19, where, to me, that's where the biggest issue is. The rest of the sign ordinance elsewhere works great. But if you can only advertise on one side of the street, you're losing 50% of your market. You hurt yourself. I'm just saying. When I look at like, the Hampton Inn, when that came in, and they put their monument sign down, when the, when this was when we first hadn't, hadn't adjusted the landscaping ordinance hard, but they put this sign in the midst of the bushes, you couldn't see anything.
But Jack, it's a four-story building with a big sign that says Hampton Inn on it.
I, I'm just saying, just, that's, but that's, they're spending money on another sign out front.
They don't even need the sign. They don't even need the sign. Okay, I have this fun little comment, and both these ladies were in the room when it happened. You know who said our road was ugly? Larry Morgan, the owner of Sun Toyota. Did he not-
Yes.
-say, Commissioner, US-19, like, it really needs help? I mean, that, he, he commented on what our road looked like when he came up for our auto dealers meeting. And so I asked him to fix his landscaping. It would go a long way. And I really did.
Madam Chair.
Believe it.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
So you and, Commissioner Mariano, you had mentioned the LED. If they were going to condense 10 of their signs, or five of their signs, or three of their signs to one LED sign, and then they would be able to reduce all of their other signage by having one LED sign that can rotate through? Is that what you were talking about?
No, I'm just talking about the height on this. But I was going to get to another section later. But as far as, if you limit the height to the sign, like, right now, if you had Sun Toyota, if they wanted to come in and go change, they'd have to now pull this sign down, bring it down to 11 feet, and that may not be worth them, for them to go do that. So if they had more space to use up high, to use it, so be it. And maybe 18's too high, but maybe there's a number that works better than 11 for, for that type of thing. And then you may see some of the signs change. I just think that as tough as the sign ordinance was put in place, people said, you know what, I'm better off with my pole sign sitting the way it just sits, and I'll deal with it. I do like the idea of the incentives in here to go help it, help make it happen. But when you look at, we've put such hard conditions on the trade-out for the billboards, that how many billboards do we really see changed on 19? Very few.
Got, no. We got a fair amount down.
I mean-
You've, you've got a few that have come down.
Oh, yeah. But could it have been better if we didn't put so, so much of a restriction on the trade-out? So we worked so hard on it to change something that was very negative, but we negotiated so hard that we didn't get as many out as we could have. So maybe we could have had twice as many swapped if we didn't quite negotiate so strongly on it.
Madam Chair, one last thing I think we should just take a public comment. I think in this day and age that we're in, I mean, I know me and my family travels, even sometimes in Pasco County, you know, this thing called a phone, and we search the business, and that's how we get there.
And it's paying, yeah.
And I think as time moves on, for some of these businesses down the road, signs almost might be obsolete.
Yeah.
Because they don't want to make the investment that. They could take those monies and spend on, obviously, beefing up their, their search capabilities and things like that. Can we take public comment and move on?
Yeah. Public comment?
No one signed up.
Anyone online?
No one's online.
Okay, I'll take a motion to approve it.
Who moved?
You moved?
Second over here.
Okay. You, you made the motion?
No, I made the second.
You made the second?
I made the second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
Roll call. Okay.
District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Moore. District Four Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District Five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three Chairman Starkey.
Aye. Two years in the making.
Yes, I was about to say that.
Three years?
I, I'm very grateful, I'm very thankful that this just passed. I will, I do want to say thank you so much to Elizabeth Blair, and to the many others, many others that I think I mentioned at the last board meeting who have been-
Maybe more.
-part of this process. It literally takes a village. There was a big village behind this. So thank you so much.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
And Elizabeth, Denise, you guys did a phenomenal job working this out.
Yep.
Really, that was the only question I had on there, just thinking about it and just going through it. So everything you did, Elizabeth, you reached out to all the people, Asher too. So all the people had concerns over the years, putting this together, phenomenal. I think it's going to be big for the county.
You're welcome.
And Denise, and a shout out to our late friend Bill Britton.
Oh, yeah, big shout out, absolutely.
Okay.
He read our warehouse clauses.
All right. What, P-67?
P-68.
68.
Item P, let me make sure it's on. Item P-68 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on June 8th, 2022.
Excellent. Well, good afternoon, Commissioners. Elizabeth Blair, Senior Assistant County Attorney, Pasco County Attorney's Office. Today is the adoption hearing for the ordinance pertaining to the proposed 2025 penny for Pasco infrastructure surtax. The ordinance provides for the following: Contains amendments to Chapter 102 of the Code of Ordinances, referendum to be placed on the November 8th, 2022, general election ballot. It adopts the referendum title language to be placed on the ballot, and it generally, generally describes how the surtax proceeds will be spent. And the title of the ordinance is as follows: An ordinance of the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, amending Chapter 102, Article 5, Infrastructure Surtax of the Pasco County Code, imposing a local government infrastructure surtax of one cent on certain transactions occurring within Pasco County from which taxes are payable to the state of Florida under the provisions of Chapter 212 Florida statutes. Providing the imposition of the surtax shall not be effective until approved at a referendum election, providing that the imposition shall be effective for a period of 15 years, beginning January 1st, 2025, providing for the distribution among Pasco County, the municipalities, and the Pasco School District pursuant to an inter-local agreement, providing for a referendum election on the November 8th, 2022, providing ballot language, providing for the use of surtax proceeds to fund infrastructure improvements, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the code, and providing an effective date. As you are aware, there is a resolution that will be setting forth the more specific uses of the 2025 penny proceeds, and that will be brought to the board for adoption in July. A draft of those proposed uses is also a part of your memo package before you. There are county staff folks in attendance that are familiar with those more specific proposed uses, should you have any questions on those. And then later in the summer, an interlocal agreement for the distribution of the proceeds among all the parties to it, as well as that allows the school district to participate in, in the surtax proceeds, will be brought to you, most likely in August. After taking public comment, the recommendation for the board action is to adopt the ordinance by roll call vote. Do you have any questions for me?
Nope.
Anybody?
Nope.
Okay.
Are we going to talk about projects?
What?
Are we going to talk about projects, or no?
What'd you say, Mike?
It's up to the purview of the board, but we'll, we'll be ready to have more specific discussions during the resolution discussion. But if you want to have that discussion, you can, of course.
We'll wait for the resolution discussion, okay? And do we have to do a roll? Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? I see Jennifer.
If you're in favor of it, you know.
Favor, I just say you're in favor of it.
She came all the way here from Wesley Chapel.
I say you like it.
Hello. Jennifer Sini, 25605, Apple Blossom Lane, Wesley Chapel, Florida, 33544. And I'm not giving you any of those other stats that you might be interested in. I'm here representing the penny pack, your penny pack, the people that are working to campaign to pass this renewal of the penny sales tax. I can say that I do represent the group when I say the group supports this ordinance as written. And I'm here to tell you that we're doing very well on fundraising. For those of you who are at our kickoff meeting last Thursday, thank you for being there. For those that weren't, I hope you'll come and meet with us and join us at other things. I wanted to say something about the history of the penny, not to reiterate what you've already heard, but because some of us were there. And this campaign needs a lot of money now, this time around, not because there's opposition to this penny per se, but there are so many new people in Pasco County that many, many people have not heard about this penny for Pasco, and they don't understand it. So we're going to be doing a very large educational push to get this penny through. In 2004, it was very tight. And in 2004, one of the things that helped us pass this penny was the fact that the county in particular committed to specific projects that had to do with improving older infrastructure, traffic lights, intersections, old roads. And it helped pass the penny. And then we got 2012, the renewal in 2012, and we added something new, which was the economic development section. And all of us supported that, too. And there have been a lot of good things that have come out of that. So here we are now in 2022, and I would like to remind the board that there are still many, many things about our older infrastructure that needs attention, and that's what the original intent of this penny was for. So with that in mind, my personal opinion, this is not the penny pack, my personal opinion is the county needs to emulate the school district and have a citizen oversight committee that actually looks at the projects that this penny, this newer version of the penny is going to cover, and, and gives their input on it. So with that, I want to say, yes, I'm 100% for the penny. I'm for this ordinance, the way it's written. And I want to remind you all of what it's supposed to do. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone online who would like to speak to this?
No one's online for this item.
Approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call again. Sorry, roll call.
District One Commissioner Oakley.
Aye.
District Two Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
District Four Commissioner Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
District Five Commissioner Mariano.
Aye.
District Three Chairman Starkey.
Aye. Thank you very much. I was at that kickoff last week. P-70.
69.
What?
P-69.
Oh, sorry. Wow. P-69.
You want to start off with rezoning procedures?
Yes. Could you please read the instruction?
There are two rezoning agendas, regular and consent. Staff will present each application to the Board of County Commissioners. If staff or planning commission has recommended approval, and there's no opposition to the application, the application will be considered by the board without further presentation. If staff or planning commission has recommended denial, or if there is opposition to the application, the applicant will be given five minutes for a presentation. The opposition will be given three minutes for each individual, or five minutes for a group representative, and the applicant will be given three minutes for rebuttal. Any individual disagreeing with staff or planning commission recommendation, or anyone wishing to object to any condition of the rezoning, may at this time request the petition to be pulled from the consent agenda, in which case, that application will be heard under the regular agenda later on during the meeting. Otherwise, all rezoning applications on the consent agenda will be approved by a single motion and vote. If you wish to speak to any petition, please give your name and address, and whether or not you've been sworn for the record. These are quasi judicial public hearings. The law in Florida is that mere public support or opposition of an application is insufficient for this board to take action. Please limit your comments to those criteria found within the board's Land Development Code.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, would you like to swear them in?
I certainly can. If you're here to speak on any of the remaining items on public hearings, please stand and raise your right hand.
And if you're online?
There's no one else online now.
No one online today?
Okay. Well, for these items. All right. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth? So help you God.
Thank you.
All right. Item P, publication?
Yes. We have 11 public hearing items on the consent agenda, and we're going to start with P-69, which is a continuance.
Item P-69 is published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 4th, 2022.
P-69 is PDD 227585, Eagle 2 Industrial, DCM PUD. As the chair stated, this item was published as a continuance for, to the August 9th, 2022, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City.
Will the continuing time be certain?
Second.
I got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Madam Chair, is it okay if we move to P-76?
Sure.
Thank you. Item P-76 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 4th, 2022.
Item P-76 is PDD 22CU14. It's conditional use in the name of Duke Energy Florida, Inc., for 315-foot above-ground level, self-supported wireless communications facility in an AC agricultural district. There was an issue with the newspaper notice on this item. So the Planning and Development Department is asking for a continuance to the July 12th, 2022, Board of County Commissioners meeting at 1:30 in Dade City. I realize that that's not the way that it was advertised for today. So if you would please take public comment, but that's a request for continuance.
So I have a question. When we say lattice-
Yeah.
So it's not a pole?
It's not a pole.
And why, why can't it be a pole?
So as you're probably going to see in the near future, when it's that tall, you're not going to see a pole. It's 315 feet. It's actually 300 with a 15-foot lightning rod. So at that height, you, chances are, you're either going to see lattice, or you're going to see guide tie, guide wires.
Oh. Okay, is this, is this some special communication?
This is for Duke Energy specifically. However, it's also going to have co-location opportunities. So it's at the Duke Energy compound.
But we don't, when did we start allowing 315-foot cell towers?
Well, they're, we're kind of losing our, the fact that we've got people from Duke who want to talk about this on the 12th. But we do have a, our consultant has stated that it is, there is need for it. And they will have, there are consultants who will speak to that as well.
Okay, well, I would like to get a meeting on it. I worked hard on that cell tower ordinance with Barbara and other people back in the day. And I've never, I mean-
There's a possibility, actually, I mean, I'm going to talk about it now, but there's a possibility that that cell tower ordinance will have to be changed. Because you will, the, the things that you're seeing out there now, the actual encapsulated, the unipoles, they can't support the, the size of the equipment anymore. It's a, it's sadly, I mean, it's a fact, but it's true.
Okay. Well, I look forward to getting educated. Okay, so you need a motion to continue? But we're seeing if anyone else wants to speak to this first.
I have no one signed up, and no one's on WebEx for this item.
Okay.
Motion to continue to Dade City.
I got it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. So we're over to P-70?
Yes. Item P-70 was published in Tampa Bay Times on April 20th, 2022.
P-70 is PDD 227565. It's Faircloth MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Faircloth Parker LLC and others. It's a rezoning request from an AC agricultural district to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow the development of a maximum of 380 single-family detached and attached residential units on approximately 187.5 acres. There is a modification that was provided to the board and to the clerk's office, adding, we, conditions of approval number 18 and number 21 were inadvertently missed, and they have to do with access management. This item comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet with the modification from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay. Board members, any questions? This is on the consent. Any, does, wait, does anyone here in the public or online wish to speak about P-70?
I have no one registered online for this item, and no one has signed up for this.
Seeing no one, we'll leave it on consent.
Oh, we're on, yeah.
P-71?
Item P-71 was published in Tampa Bay Times on April 20th, 2022.
Item P-71 is PDD 227592. As a matter of a housekeeping item, there were ex parte communications forms, with ex parte communications with all the commissioners, and those were submitted to the clerk's office earlier this morning. office earlier this morning. It is for Hillcrest MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, MMLJ Holdings LLC, and Christina H. Di Lorenzo. It's for a rezoning from an AC agricultural district and an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District to allow for the development of a maximum of 1,800 single-family detached dwelling units, 600 single-family townhomes, 450,000 square feet of retail, and 200,000 square feet of light industrial office on approximately 740.2 acres. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Would anyone in the public like to comment on P-71?
I have no one signed up for P-71, and no one on Zone WebEx.
Please keep it on consent. P-72?
Item P-72 was published in Tampa Bay Times on May 4th, 2022.
P-72 is PDD 227595. Again, by way of housekeeping, there's ex parte communications with each and every single commissioner, and those were provided to the clerk's office this morning. This is a zoning amendment, Polte Zona Law, MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, Zona Lee Law, Inc. It's a rezoning from AR Agricultural Residential to an MPUD to allow for a maximum of 130 single-family detached dwellings and associated infrastructure on approximately 79.65 acres. This comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission. And there was a modification to the agenda memo. The only thing that was changed is just the recommended board action. By mistake, the board, the action to the Planning Commission was included instead of the board action.
Okay.
And that was corrected.
Okay. Any questions? Is there anyone here in opposition to P-72?
I have no one signed up for P-72, and no one is on WebEx for P-72.
All right, we'll keep it on consent. P-73?
Item P-73 was published in Tampa Bay Times on May 4th, 2022.
P-73 is PDD 227610. Zoning amendment in the name of Geiger Ranch LLC. It's for change in zoning from an MPUD Master Plan Unit Development District, which was formerly known as Saran Ranch MPUD, to an AR Agricultural Residential District, and it's just on a portion of it, it's 9.61 acres. This item comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay. Board members, any questions? Is there anyone in opposition to this that would wish to speak?
I have no one signed up for this item, and there's no one on WebEx.
All right, we will keep it on consent. P-74?
Item P-74 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 4th, 2022.
That's PDD 227618, another housekeeping item. There are ex parte communications with each commissioner, and those were submitted to the clerk's office earlier this morning. This is a zoning amendment in the name of I-75 Logistics Center MPUD Master Plan Unit Development, formerly known as Pasco Commerce Center MPUD, GC Pasco Owner LLC, and John Lewis Grossenbacher Trust. It's a substantial modification to allow the inclusion of approximately 56.17 additional acres and an increase in the maximum industrial entitlements to 1.9 million square feet on approximately 224.57 acres. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval with conditions as included in your agenda packet from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay, any questions, board members? Anyone here to speak in opposition to this?
I have no one signed up and no one on WebEx for this item.
Okay, rolling along. P-76.
Seventy-four.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, yes.
Seventy-five.
Yep. Item P-75 was published in Tampa Bay Times on May 4th, 2022.
P-75 is PDD 227620. This is just picking up the rest of the area that had not been picked up with the prior rezoning. It's under One Lakouchi Center, Inc., WREC Property EDC Project. It's for change in zoning from an R4 high-density residential district to an I1 light industrial park district. Comes to you with a recommendation of approval from the Planning and Development Department and the Planning Commission.
Okay, any questions? Are you coming up to speak to us?
No, he's got the next item.
Oh, you have the next one, okay.
He's getting ready.
Is there any, do you have? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against P-75?
I have no one signed up for P-75, and no one's on WebEx for this item.
And if you look at the map, you can see the trail.
There you go.
No? Yes, it's there. Okay, keep it on consent. Next one, P-76.
Seventy-seven.
Oh, seventy-seven, I'm so messed up, sorry.
Item P-77 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 25th, 2022.
All right. Justin Grant, Director, Public Infrastructure, Fiscal and Business Administration. P-77 is a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, authorizing an upgrade to the street lighting improvements and an assessment rate increase for the Lake Talia service area in accordance with Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, Article 2, Sections 94 through 46.
Okay.
Does anyone, board members, do you have any questions on this one?
Okay, is there anyone here who wishes to speak in opposition to this?
I have no one signed up, and no one's on WebEx for this item.
All right, we will keep it on consent. Moving on. Do you have the next one? Go ahead.
Okay. Item P-78 was published in Tampa Bay Times on May 25th, 2022.
P-78 is a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, authorizing an upgrade to the street lighting improvements and an assessment rate increase for the Lone Star Light Service Area in accordance with Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, Article 2, Sections 94 through 46 through 94-56. Recommendation of approval.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against this?
I have no one signed up for this item, and no one's on WebEx either.
We'll keep it on consent. Next, P-79.
Item P-79 was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May 25th, 2022.
P-79 is a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, designating that the area commonly known as Cypress Preserve, phases 3A and 4A and Phase 4B, as a streetlight service area, and consolidating Cypress Preserve, phases 3A and 4A and Phase 4B into the existing Cypress Preserve streetlight service area for streetlight improvements and to levy assessments against the property benefited by the street lighting improvements in accordance with Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, Article 3, Sections 94-46 through 94-56.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to speak against this item?
I have no one signed up for this item, and no one's on WebEx either.
Right, we'll keep P-79 on the consent. And lastly, P-80.
Item P-80 was published in Tampa Bay Times on May 25th, 2022.
Item P-80 is a resolution by the Board of County Commissioners of Pasco County, Florida, designating that the area commonly known to as Bexley South 4-4 and North 3-1, phases A and B, as a streetlight service area, and consolidating Bexley South 4-4 and North 3-1, phases A and B into the existing Bexley South streetlight service area for streetlight improvements and to levy assessments against the property benefited by the street lighting improvements in accordance with Pasco County Code of Ordinances, Chapter 94, Article 3, Sections 94-46 through 94-56. Recommendation of approval.
Anyone to speak against this?
I have no one signed up and no one on WebEx.
All right, we're going to keep it on the consent. I have P-71, P-70, 71, 72, 73, 74, 75. Which one did we continue?
Seventy-six was continued.
Seventy-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, and eighty on the consent. I'll take a motion.
Motion for consent item.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I have a question on those streetlights. I mean, is there a better way to do this? Can it be done at some other process in the development process than to come back up and do them later?
Yeah, so what, if I'm understanding your question directly, so what happens is you have two different things, right? You can have residents that'll come and ask for additions or modifications, and we will go do that. We'll audit their districts at the same time. It requires a rate increase. We'll come back at the same time. You also have developments that are coming online that have existing streetlight services areas, so the developers will come and ask us, hey, we don't want to administrate the district on our own. We'd like the county to handle that. And so they go through our petition process, which we formalized during the last year to only do during the springtime. So whereas before, if you remember kind of a couple of years ago, we would come ad hoc throughout the spring and do a number of these different districts, we try and do them all at once, depending on which side of the county. So we've kind of limited it now through the petition process that runs from January through April, to where we bring these to you in two separate meetings, one on the east side, one on the west side.
So I'm kind of thinking of how we eliminated the liquor, the conditional uses for liquor to administrate it.
No, you can't, no.
We can't because it's a tax levy of some sort?
You're creating a municipal service benefit unit to pay for these streetlights.
Because I've never seen anyone say no. So just trying to save everyone time and save the public time.
We're required, anytime we modify existing districts, to add additional benefiting areas, so i.e. different people will get that on their tax bill. We have to come back to the board if you have an increase in the district rate. We have to come back to the board.
Okay.
We do, however, do a number of audits and things like that where you'll reduce rates. Those do not have to come back to the board. We take those as regular consent items.
Okay.
They don't require a public hearing or public notice.
Okay.
We'd be doing P-VAS that way if you didn't have to.
Yes. And I see Ainsley moving over there.
Madam Chair, years ago, we had some people and Commissioner Oakley, just like in Lakouchi, that came out and spoke.
That's right.
Remember that one well, sir?
Yeah, they worried about the, yeah.
Yeah, they didn't want to pay for it.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, that was, thank you.
Thank you.
P-81?
Item P-81 was published in Tampa Bay Times on April 6th, 2022.
Liam Devine, Planning and Development. Item P-81, sorry, PDD 22-7609 in the name of DND LLC. It is a zoning amendment from R4 high-density residential district to MF1 multifamily medium-density district. The subject site is located on the west side of Hicks Road, approximately a quarter-mile south of New York Avenue. And this is a look at the aerial view. The surrounding future land use to the north, south, east, and west is all RES6. The surrounding zoning to the northeast and south is all AR, and to the west is PUD, the Highland Ridge subdivision. The subject site is currently undeveloped on approximately 14.03 acres. The applicant is proposing to develop the property with 84 townhomes in conformance with the MF1 multifamily medium-density district standards. The applicant has volunteered to record a deed restriction for the property as included in your agenda packet. Access to the property is from Hicks Road, a county-maintained collector road with approximately 50 feet of right-of-way that varies. And the subject, the subject site has a future land use classification of RES6 under the comprehensive plan. This is coming with a recommendation for approval from Planning Commission and Planning and Development Department. I'm here if you have any questions.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Question, how many wetlands are on the site?
There is, you know what, I will have to double-check for you. I believe there is a wetland. I think it's a category 3, but I can verify that for you.
All right, and from the map, from the map that was on the drawing, from early drawings, I guess, it shows it's on the west side of the property in the center part.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that again?
The map showed, you have any notes you want to pull it up?
Yes. I don't, we, if you're talking about the wetlands on the map, we'll have to pull up Pasco Mapper, and we can pull that up, and you can look at the wetlands.
All right. Someone can do that while we keep talking, or?
Yep.
Okay. Next question, we get a five-foot sidewalk. I had talked, I had met with the applicant. We talked about putting a trail running down to the south.
Now you're talking.
There may, there may be some restrictions as far as how much room's there, but I'd like to see a wider-than-five-foot sidewalk. I mean, the part of, this development is a lot of intensity, which we'll talk about in a minute, too, to go all the way down there. I want to make it easy for the families to be able to just go right down to Veterans Park, right down the hill. And they're willing to go work if we give them mobility fee credits, which is good, to make that connection happen, because otherwise it wouldn't happen. Have you looked at that? Because I don't see anything in here other than the five-foot sidewalk.
So if you actually look into those deed restrictions, and I'm sure I can let the applicant speak to that, in that deed restriction, they're agreeing to commit to a DA that would include that five-foot wide sidewalk along the eastern portion of the property, and they would get mobility fee credits for that. That's included in that deed restriction in your package.
Right, but I didn't want it to be just a five-foot sidewalk. If they made wider, I don't like to make it wider.
So that's a voluntary deed restriction, so you would have to speak with the applicant to see if they are agreeing to go wider than that.
Okay. All right, if you would, pull up, let's pull up the wetlands.
That is correct.
Okay. The other map that I saw, it shows more like it's on the other end of the property, too, but it doesn't seem to show it here.
I'm not sure what other map you're referring to.
I'll tell you in a second. It's under Exhibit A, legal description.
Are you seeing my text?
It's got a circle there. I'm not sure why the circle is drawn, I guess.
No, fine.
I'll try to zoom in.
Jack, you need to talk over for a second.
Okay.
I'll defer to the applicant on what the circle is for their Exhibit A. That would be their survey they submitted for the property. That could be maybe a proposed water retention pond area. I'm not quite sure off the top of my head.
All right, it says approximate limits of flood zones. Zone A, and it's kind of like, if you look at where, I guess the lower edge or center edge, there's, looks like there's something different than the rest of the terrain on the left side portion of the screen that's up there. Kind of with the numbers of 9711 to 9735 on the side there.
That could be elevations on that Exhibit A. I don't have that in front of me, so I don't know for sure. So I'll defer to the applicant to answer exactly what's on their survey.
Okay. Because I'm just wondering, can you, have we looked at whether it can be built on that or not? Because it's, like I said, it says approximate maps of flood zones.
What I can tell you is the property does have two different flood zones on it. There is A and X on it, so that could be the lower lying area of flood zone A.
They both say flood zone A on both pieces around it. All right, why don't we let the applicant talk, and if you would, go take a look at the map?
Yeah.
On screen. Well, there it is here. Here it is. So look, so look at the left side of the screen.
Yep, so I can confirm that's just showing the difference between the flood zones, so that circular part that you're seeing, that's the lower lying flood zone A.
Okay. All right. Did any conversation come up about Upland Drive where the wetland shows it's coming across that? Or is that part of any conversation?
No, they're not proposing any access to the Upland Drive, only Hicks Road.
Does staff think we should set access there or just the middle of the property?
I would defer to our access team. Stacy Burgess is, I believe she may be online. She can refer to that. She's the one who looked at the timing and phasing and substandard.
Okay.
Barbara Willhite, 6327 Grand Boulevard, Newport, Florida, for the applicant. With regard to the sidewalk, it's an off-site improvement down to the park. It's proposed at five feet. The bike ped fees or your mobility fee will generate $13,608. That improvement that my clients agreed to at five feet is a $30,000 to $40,000 improvement, so we're already upside down, which means my client's putting more into the off-site improvement voluntarily than they'd be able to get back in mobility fee credits. So to do anything more, we're really getting to the point of it being pretty difficult for a small project to do that. If there's some way to get mobility fee credits against something other than the bike ped portion, if it's roadway portion, because maybe it's safety or something, then we would If there's some way to get mobility fee credits against something other than the bike ped portion, if it's roadway portion, because maybe it's safety or something, then we could have a larger budget to work with. But right now, they're already fronting, paying for this off-site improvement, other than thirteen thousand, six hundred and eight dollars of it.
Well, we're looking for a significant amount of people who own a small piece of property. And there's a park right down the street that the people are going to go to. So I thought we had conversation, we pretty well agreed, whatever credit you could get, you'd get. But if not, we'd still get the road done or the path done as wide as we could. Let me ask this, when we talked, did we talk about doing less units than eighty-four?
No, no, you were fine with eighty-four.
Didn't, didn't you tell me that they had plans before that we didn't think it was going to get more than the fifties?
So right now, they have zoning for R four. We have R four zoning, which allows a maximum number of units, which I just shuffled my paperwork here. Eighty-four units under the current zoning. And it's got a special exception for duplexes, which allows forty-two duplexes and, or eighty-four units. So keeping density the same.
What, what was the plan that we talked about? I thought you showed me that there was a plan that was less density, I thought.
You got, the engineer's got all those details. We're gonna have, we're gonna have to get him up here. I don't, I don't know.
Hey, good afternoon. Jesse Blackstock for the record for sixteen forty-six West Snow Avenue, Tampa, Florida.
And you've been sworn?
I have, yes.
Thank you.
The question regarding the number of units, in terms of what can be achieved on the site with taking into account wetlands and floodplain.
What I'm asking is, when we had our conversation, we talked about, I thought eighty-four was a high number. And then you said, I thought it was you, it was someone else in the room, the three, the three of us, that the plans that were already in place were actually from, designed from twenty years ago, whatever.
Correct.
Was more like fifty units.
Yeah, correct. It was actually forty-eight to be exact. Yeah, the number of units previously was forty-eight and it was not a townhome product. It was single-family homes, but they were narrower units. They were probably thirty to forty foot wide. So when you introduce the fact that we're doing townhomes, we may be able to get more than forty-eight on the property. But still gotta take into account the wetlands and the floodplain and the stormwater and all that, so. One of, one of the things I'd point out is the challenge for the eight-foot path is the red is what's showing wetlands. But when you look at the National Wetlands Inventory of wetlands, obviously it would have to be flagged. But the area that's around that S-shaped or kidney bean-shaped, for lack of a better word, closed basin sinkhole, around that, you're going to have a bigger buffer, a bigger wetland. So it's going to be an impact as it is probably even with the five-foot sidewalk, so the eight-foot, it's substantial when you look at the map. It doesn't look that way on the Pasco Mappers website, but on the national one, there is one. We also have a wetland to our western edge where that floodplain is showing. We had Berman Environmental go out and flag that wetland. It's just not formalized yet with, with money with the county. But obviously, once we get past this point, it would be. So there's areas we have to stay out of, to the west of us. And it kind of links up with the wetlands to the south of the existing single family to our west.
Okay, so looking at the map to the right, we'll talk to the trail first. Your first section of your property, you can do, how much, how much you probably do as far as the width of a trail? On your property?
On our property, I mean, per code, we're doing the five-foot sidewalk, but if we have to do the trail, it would be obviously bigger. It would probably be eight foot, I would imagine, multiple trails.
Eight foot.
We're having a dedicated right of way there.
I'd be, I'd be comfortable with eight. So for you to go for your property, down to the next section down looks okay. When it gets to that sinkhole area, maybe you could put just some elevated type of thing, kind of like we do on State Road fifty-four or Holiday. We have to put a wooden bridge going across it to kind of get it, so you don't have the impact, whatever, one way or the other, rather than filling it in to, which I don't think you could do.
Yeah, that's what I'm getting at. Yeah, I mean, it's.
So I don't mind, I don't mind if it shrinks at that point there, but for the rest of it, it should be, should be wide enough for a trail, except for around that area.
Yeah, I don't know the right of way width, but yeah. For us, we're having a dedicated right of way. It's a little tougher, as you go, so I don't know. Without a survey, it's harder to know.
So the condition says subject to permitting, so, or the deed restriction. So did we answer your question about the density?
You did. And again, so when we talked, you didn't think you were probably going to get the density that we were going for. But in the item, it says not only you want the eighty-four, but if it allows you to get more, you want to put more units in that.
No, no, it's eighty-four. It's counted eighty-four.
Just reading, reading the script.
Got a deed restriction on it. And it's eighty-four. Very clearly eighty-four, which is the Res six density, the maximum density under Res six. It's the maximum density today under R four. You gotta remember, it's Res six. It's on a vision road. It's on a road where you're going to put future transit. I usually don't see that very often when I look at the long-range transportation plan. It's kind of unusual to see where you're going to do future bus service. So pretty important road, makes sense to have density on it. Your land use plan says to put density on it. Your schools are under capacity in that area. Your road is standard. And so, you know, with those things, those are the reasons why the townhomes make sense. Townhomes are, they're fee simple, so people, they're homes that people can buy, which we need more of. They're maintained, commonly maintained by HOA. So all of those things lead towards it being, that being the right, you know, density number to allow for a townhome project. And the, it's just a matter of the money on, for that sidewalk. Unfortunately, our, we only generate thirteen thousand worth of mobility fees, thirteen thousand and change. So we're already paying like three times that, they're going to pay out of their pocket to put that off-site sidewalk in. So I'm open to solutions, if anybody has a solution on how we can get more credits.
Now, so let me go to.
That would be the, that would be the solution. I mean, we're absolutely happy to do it.
So again, I was expecting you to come with a, a lower density number. Section two A on the applicant, it says, the applicant has volunteered to record a deed restriction to the property for the following restrictions. There should be a maximum of eighty-four townhomes in the property unless otherwise approved by the county through a subsequent rezoning of the property.
Right, so if we came back and changed the land use in the future and wanted to change this deed restriction, it's saying that you can change the deed restriction by going back through the process. So it's just, it's the way the deed restrictions, that's the standard way our deed restrictions are written. Not that any of those things are going to occur, but.
Okay. Go ahead, Commissioner Stock.
I'm, I'm sorry, I stepped out. My assistant had to leave. Okay. Why is there not a tree in front of every townhouse?
There is.
Okay, what, so what am I reading here that it says? A tree, wait, I just saw. A minimum of two lot trees shall be placed in front of each four unit. So that would be a minimum of four trees in a four unit.
So this is your policy. I just.
Did we not update that yet? Or is this something I need to do here today?
This is how townhomes are written.
Didn't we update the townhomes?
You may want to read the, the beginning paragraph. Each lot shall be required to have one lot tree per lot with the following additional planting requirement. One lot tree per lot would be additional requirement.
Well, what are you calling a lot? Can one lot have four homes, units on it?
Or is? Fee simple ownership.
So this shows that there's going to be three trees in a four unit.
Townhomes. Huh?
It says that there's going to be three trees in front of a four unit.
Yeah, why aren't there four trees in front of a four unit? That's what I'm asking. And here I'm reading two trees in front of four units. Am I reading that wrong?
In C I, right above it. Well.
I'm in C A.
Well, I says you have one uni, one tree, and then underneath of it, it says two more trees for the four, and then it says three more trees for the five.
So you, you are getting the minimum one plus.
I'm not sure it's reading that way.
That's what it says.
But what, what is that? Who's, who worked on this? My, which planner worked on this? So I can understand.
It's shorting a tree.
Is, so it's one house per lot? Because this doesn't make sense to me. You say each lot will have a tree, and then you can have townhouses. So is it one? It's confusing to me, sorry.
I'm, I'm sorry, I was stepping away to be able to pull up the deed restrictions online. Which section are you talking about? You're talking about the I?
C. It says, in the, in the event the property is subdivided and developed to create townhouses or duplexes on individual lots. So if you have, I mean, so I am assuming one townhouse. You're not going to put one townhouse on one lot. That's where I'm confused, sorry. But maybe you are, I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, Brad, get up there and help.
Help me. Help me, I'm sorry.
Yes, fee simple townhomes are subdivided into individual lots. If you have four units that are attached, it will have lot lines. It will have four lots.
Okay. All right, so each lot will have one tree and, and then additional two for every four? Even if they're not on the same, for every four lots, you have to add another two? Is that what you're saying? That, I'm still, it still doesn't make sense to me.
That was, that was the intent. This is the language that was approved, that was carried over. This is what we've been using. So it is, it is no different.
Okay, so it's the first time we're seeing this language then? Because, no, Barbara, you seen this?
No, Commissioners, this is copy and paste from your policy. Yeah.
Okay. So it's one plus additional, one plus every other. It's weird, I'm sorry.
So I hate to venture into this, but you're. You've got an MF one Multi Family zoning district. In theory, if the applicant hadn't restricted it in her deed restriction to townhomes, it could be a multi-family project. I think that's some of what's, what you're getting confused about. But they, they have said they're going to do eighty-four townhomes. To do townhomes that way, you're going to have to have, if, if they're going to be fee, fee simple, they're going to have to subdivide it. They're going to be lots. You're going to get a tree on each one.
Okay, that's all I care about. Okay.
And Commissioner.
Yeah.
That language, I'm looking at the deed restriction itself. Says there shall be a maximum eighty-four dwelling units on the property unless otherwise approved by the county. That is pretty vague, so we'll, we'll take out unless otherwise approved by the county. Because it says above it, under one point one, it says here's the deed restriction unless it goes back to a rezoning process. So I get, I see your concern, so we can take that language out.
All right, well, if we can do that, and then we can put in eight-foot wide trail, except for that one sinkhole there, you can get onto a five-foot path at that area. I'm going to be okay with it. Are you okay with that?
Let me just ask my client back here.
I'll make a motion for approval, removing.
We didn't hear public comment yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if there is or isn't. Is there anybody online or anything?
But they're all fee simple?
Madam Chair, do you want to know about public?
So is there anyone here wishing to speak to this?
I have no one signed up for public comment, and no one is on WebEx for this item.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I'd like to say I'm very happy to see it is fee simple, though. I think it's great for our people to be able to own the property and especially in this area here. I'm going to make a motion for approval with the conditions, as the applicants agreed, to have a eight-foot wide trail running to the south to Veterans Park. With the exception of where there's a sinkhole out there where it could be a five-foot bridge or sidewalk along that way. And with the limit of the eighty-four, eighty-four townhomes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you're done. Thank you. And P eighty-two.
Item P eighty-two was published in the Tampa Bay Times on May fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. In the call of Public Works, and this is P W twenty-two zero zero eight nine. This is the P VAS known at Valerim Assessments, the west side of the county only. And therefore, paving assessment, assessment projects, excuse me. There are nine streets, two point zero eight miles, one hundred and ninety-one assessment notification letters were mailed out. We had no objection. In terms of what will be going on the tax roll this year, both east and west sides, there are twelve paving assessment project, thirty-two streets, six point four, six miles. And just point, one point one six million dollars in terms of total assessments. And in terms of on the tax bill, it's just over a hundred and forty-seven thousand. There were six hundred and thirty-six total assessment notification, that's for both the east and the west side. And we got five written objections, which we responded to. Staff is recommending approval.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak to the P VAS projects?
I have no one signed up, and no one's on WebEx for this item.
Motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So I have a, I have a, we're done with the regular, right?
I had one thing I was going to bring up.
Yeah, and I have a question for Brad. Did he leave?
He's standing there in the back.
Okay.
Brad.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Okay. We looked a little while ago at Denton Avenue and Hicks Road. We talked about a possible industrial park coming up. And the county has property beside it. Some of the county-owned properties, they actually are doing reclaimed water facilities, spray fields, as well as other utility parts. And I'd like us to go and combine and change, let's say, all the, the lands for the, that the county has from public to semi-public and Res three, to put everything into industrial. And there'd be a center part of it, and if we put in for heavy industrial, it won't affect anything around it, but it provides a better potential. So much as we talked about before, when we did the Central Pasco Employment Village, to like, try to encourage industrial parks, et cetera. And the data we saw was how much of a benefit it is to have industrial land in the county and how much there was a need for the Hudson area to have an industrial park. I'd like to have the county do a board initiate, county-initiated comprehensive plan amendment along the Denton area, the kind of detail in the email that Terry sent, sent to us.
Madam Chair, that would need, we need to do a public hearing. Do you have to do a public hearing for that?
Well, I think he's trying, the Commissioner wishes you to do a county-initiated, which then means it has to go through the, has to go through the process. Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're doing a county-initiated planning exercise at Gunnin fifty-four, so that it doesn't get, yeah, chewed up and gets planned well. So Brad, I had a question for you. And I, I'm sorry, you may not, maybe for Terry, I'm not sure. But this is the first time I've read, I had a project like this that I've read. And I'm looking at the townhomes. And it says that lot trees within a townhome or duplex block may be a shade tree, an understory tree, or a palm tree. So it can't be queen palms or crepe myrtles, but we can put like a, a ligustum tree or, I mean, like a, why are we allowing understory trees? I guess that's my question.
It's essentially the same issue that we've come up with. When you come to a townhome property, you have a number of areas that are driveway spaces that obviously you don't plant on. And then other spaces that are related to utility lines, service lines, soft utilities, hard utilities, everything else going to those units and working through those units. And that creates some issues for roots and other things. So there are going to be situations where you will need some other form of tree or some other form of landscaping in certain areas.
Well, should we? I mean, but this lets everybody who may not have those situations get away with just putting a little bush and, and no trees. I mean, because a ligustum tree can be five feet, six feet high or something. And, and on the palm tree, do we, it's not three to one, it's just one?
So we can, do you want to talk about going back and looking at this some more? And seeing?
I think we're going to get abused, that's all. If we're not more specific.
We did talk in another situation on a, on a, on a different section of code about having a height minimum.
Yes, we did, yeah.
We could potentially maybe consider something like that, adding some language to this and doing a slight modification of this. But, you know, it would be, whatever ends up in code can be addressed through an Alt standard to deal with that. So if we are too restrictive and, and something that the projects can't do, they would need to be doing an alternate standard to request deviation. We're actually trying to avoid that because of the, the work for something that we generally need to allow anyway. So it was kind of a six of one, half dozen the other, which direction we went.
Well, if we put a height, a height, you know, if we say it has to be at least this high, then we avoid what happened in your dis, who's got Union Park? I mean, I'm happy to put the picture back up if you want to see it again.
I've been out there many times.
Yeah. So we just need to not let that happen anymore, so. Whatever it is to.
Certainly go back and look at that and look at maybe adding a, a height minimum to, to those plantings.
And is it one palm tree or?
I believe it is. It does say one, right? But it's a particular types.
But we do have, we call out the types? I mean, it's not going to be a pickbait date palm?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I just, that concerned me because we, we may not do what we tried to do in that language, so. Okay, we have something very important to talk about. Nope, we have Ralph's memo here. And Ralph?
So good afternoon, Commissioners. As I brought to your attention, and I also sent you all an email as a follow-up to our discussions. The two thousand and twenty-two legislative session, the Florida House included a budget item that passed, which set up a funding source for local support grants. It was capped at a hundred and seventy-five million dollars. And last Monday, they opened up the grant process, allowing the House members to submit projects. It's similar to legislative budget requests that are done during a normal rate, during the regular session. This is a one-time only. It's never been done before. Once it's spent, it's spent. These are for non-recurring projects. Not much direction was given on how the projects, what should be considered. The decision will be made up to the appropriation staff and to the Legislative Budget Commission, which is made up of six members of the House, six members of the Senate. And they are at the call of the President and the Speaker to meet whenever. Did have some direction given to me from, from members, suggesting we do not go after any veto projects. And because the amount is $175 million total, and it's open to all local governments, that's county, city, schools, education entities, privately operated programs, to support local initiatives, to limit the amount of the projects to around $2 million or less. There may be projects that exceed that, but the discretion on these projects are really up to the, to the leadership. In the end, end of the day, the governor has no say on these projects, cannot weigh in on them. He's already approved the budget, and it was included in there. That being said, I did reach out to the departments and get suggestions for projects within the county, and I submitted that list to you. There are several dredge projects, a, a bridge project, Animal Services had a project for their veterinary services, two park projects, and a Florida Sports Coast project on there. And so what my goal is, since the representatives have a date of July 15th, is to get the project to our sponsor as we move forward, so they can get these in in a timely fashion. The staff will review it, and then they'll report back to the local entity to let them know if it was approved, and then we have to submit additional forms that they have to get in by August 10th. I then see the Legislative Budget Commission being called, and then dispersing the funds at that time, probably before the end of the year.
Madam Chair?
Yep.
Just so we're getting it right, your two projects, let's try to keep them under $2 million, so we have a chance to get them.
Yeah, and the most two projects don't want to exceed, exceed that.
Since I'm still talking, I'll give you two. It's, I know, listen, I'm going to the list, no, these are in my area. I'd say Robert Strickland Seawall Beach Sand, 1.8, and Anklit River Additional Butt Rams Park, 1.8. There's two. Second? All right. Is that good for everybody?
Yeah, I did want to talk BMX, but I think it might be, I know. We could ask for less, but, okay. I'm just happy that people thought enough of the BMX. That, that's going to be huge for the county when we get to pull that off.
Just want to be able to get them, so.
Okay.
So let me give this opportunity to say, so...
Can we, can we call the vote real quick?
Go right ahead, please.
No, we're in discussion.
Well, no, he was going to say something else.
I can go after that, go ahead.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, now you can speak.
Are you happy? You're happy, aren't you?
Very happy.
I know you are.
But let me just think this as an opportunity. So, after the elections in November, they'll start committee week in, in December. They're going to go ahead and start opening up for next year's budget. So we really need for you all to reach out to the departments and start working about projects within your district, so we can move forward in a timely fashion, and have our projects, so we can start working them. So I always say that every year. So, session starts March 7th. So we really want to be prepared way before the end of the year on what projects we're going to submit for next year's budget. Thank you.
There's some good things on that list right there. Okay, did we have anything else?
No.
Okay, we're done.
Good job.
Good work.